All right, I will call the meeting to order. Excuse me, order, if everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
By the United States of America, the Republic for which it's being, one nation under God, and with the love of the Father, and with the love of the Son, and with the love of the Holy Spirit.
First order of business, Commissioner Evans, do we have any opening comments?
No, not this evening.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Reach out to the township building. I do not see any hands raised here, any in Zoom world. None at this time. All right, moving right along, township solicitor, we have Tom. Replacing Tom, welcome, how are you?
I'm sorry, I can't hear the township, Mr. Host, at all.
Thanks, Mark.
Can you hear me now?
How about now, Mark? No?
It's a little bit better, I'll just turn my volume up.
A little closer.
Okay, you have before you this evening eighteen easements, easement agreements, that are necessary to complete three stormwater improvement projects that you're aware of. One on Reed and Oak Street, one at Barley Sheath, and one on South Lloyd Avenue. All these agreements have been executed by the property owners. And we would ask that the board approve these easements and approve a motion to authorize the board president to sign these easements.
Commissioners, any questions on these easements?
No.
All right, I will ask residents. Residents, any questions on these easements? I do not see any hand raised here in the township, nor at one line. Entertain a motion to approve the easements.
They'll move.
The move? Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
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 Mark, was that an aye? Are you muted?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote present.
Present?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a yes or a no? I'm sorry, I...
It's neither, really, I guess, just here. I'll abide with whatever y'all decide.
Okay, motion passes for... How do you want to place the one?
You can mark present under Robert's rules.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Thomas. Next on the agenda, township engineer.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Carl, how are you?
Hello.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Carl Schmidt with Arrow, good evening to the commissioners and members of the board. Four items on the agenda this evening. Item number one, this is a request for consideration to approve a payment number two to construction master services in the amount of $130,896. This is for work completed through the end of March related to the Moore Row Bridge replacement project.
And how's that project going?
Missed that, go ahead.
How's that project going? How far along are we?
Yeah, it's going very well. This is the second payment in addition to the first payment. This is forty-seven percent of the budget. The remaining is about $300,000. They have shown a conclusion date of paving in early May. So everything's on schedule and moving well, moving along forward.
And that one's being cast in place, right?
Correct.
And the Pico workaround has seemed to work?
Yes. This was the project with the Pico gas line still in place. It was exposed due to some erosion in the, in the stream bed. The change order that was approved by the board provided the contractor a workaround to keep moving. So they've completed that work and they're pouring the concrete early next week.
Perfect. Just a question on the motion, how much was it? Was it 183?
The payment number two is 130.
Okay.
196.
Okay, I'll move to the next one in the packet, sorry.
Commissioners, any other questions on this?
No.
From residents, any questions on this project? This time, entertain a motion to approve payment number two for the construction master services in the amount of $130,896.
Then moved.
Moved? Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Present.
Four with one present. Passes. Next, Carl.
Item two, request for consideration to approve payment number one to KBC Constructions LLC in the amount of $183,665.40. This was work done related to the North Bailey Drainage Improvements and culvert. The work is completed, so this is pay app number one, short of the retainage amount.
Is that project fully complete now?
Yes, done and paved. There's just a couple of things left, the retainage, but we're ready for final inspection.
Need further questions?
No questions.
Questions from residents? At this time, entertain a motion to approve payment number one to KBC Construction in the amount of $183,665.40.
They'll move.
They'll move?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Present.
Be four and one present. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item three, request for consideration to approve a change order. Change order number one is for Custer excavation. This is in the amount of $4,510. It's in relation to the Park Drive Stormwater Conveyance System upgrades. And it was specifically for additional utility investigation. There were quite a few underground lines, power, and communication lines that we needed to confirm elevations before all the big work started.
Commissioners, any questions on this change order?
No.
So it says on here, though, that the change was for test pitting and vac truck?
Yeah, what we did is a little less intrusive. It was to cut a little hole in the asphalt with a saw. And the vac truck has a high-power air and a high-power vacuum. So once they open up a hole, they can go down to the top of these cables and conduits and such. Not too intrusive, you don't run the risk with a backhoe running and breaking these things. We needed to find PA, one call gives you horizontal, yeah, horizontals, they show you where they're at. But not vertically elevation-wise, so we wanted to make sure some of these were... Where, we needed to confirm where they are before the actual stormwater pipe goes in.
Okay.
And Mr. Young, this, this change order was a result of a field change that we requested as the municipality. We did a field design change, which is different than what the contractor had bid on. So, you know, you've heard of, I've told all of you of some of the issues we're walking into with utilities. The contractor asked for the change order because he wanted additional investigation because he wanted to make sure he wasn't going to take a chance hitting any lines. Okay. So the, the change order is essentially at, at our request.
Commissioners, any further questions?
No.
The residents, any questions? Any in Zoom world?
There is actually Noel.
Yes, Noel, welcome.
Hello, everyone, hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
I don't know if this is the time, I'm sorta like, I walked away for a minute and when I came back, I'm just, I don't understand, what does present mean? I don't know if I missed that. Is that a yes, a no, abstention? I'm just curious.
Noel, it's neither, it's just here.
Okay, I, I just never heard that before and...
Yeah, it's kind of new to us. Apparently it's part of Robert's rules, you are allowed to vote as present.
Oh, okay, I...
Just like you're doing in Congress, people vote present versus yes or no.
Okay, I, I need to process that a little bit because, you know, well, you know me, I love learning, but I do, you know, I do value what, you know, Mr. Evans has to say too. You know, that's why we have our commissioners. I, I'm always learning, so if it's something to learn from Robert's rules, good, I'm gonna, I'm gonna learn something new. So just thought I'd ask that question. Thank you so much.
Noel, I thank you for your wanting to know how I think and where I'm on things and appreciating that. Just, I just don't feel comfortable this evening, so I'll just leave it at that. I will share anything at a later date, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Noel. We are... Any, any other residents? Miss Denny?
Not at this time.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the change order number one to Custer Escavating in the amount of $4,510 for the Park Drive Stormwater, excuse me, Stormwater Conveyance System.
They'll move.
They moved?
Who was that?
Kidding.
Okay.
Second.
By Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
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 Present.
It's four to one present, motion passes.
Good, thank you. Last one, this is a request for consideration to approve amendment number two to PSA 0821, PTO 1. This is in the amount of $39,000 even. This is in relation to the Geo Carlson Boulevard Bridge Repair Project. And this is specific to the upstream side that has a large scour in it. And it's a, it's a scour repair that the, the stream activity has also impacted an adjacent stream bank, so scope increased a little bit beyond the scour. And this amendment would include permitting and design and, and specifications for that stream bank restoration activity.
This is on the golf course side of that bridge?
Yes.
This is the culvert right by the dentist office, correct?
It is.
Okay.
It is. This is specific to a scour that had occurred maybe a year ago, year and a half ago. This is something the township has been looking at for a little while. We went back to revisit it, we're anxious to go to bid, but on the golf course side, the, the berm that also serves for a retention pond for the golf course, one of that, one of the sides of that berm is on the creek. And so it's a, it's a creekside slope. So it's a stream bank that caught some erosion. The structures functioning for that pond are in disrepair. And so this covers fixing that.
And I know it was brought up at the last meeting, Ray hadn't spoken about it, but I, I just want to assure the residents that that bridge is intact, safety-wise, we have no issues crossing it, driving over it.
Correct, the bridge is intact. Last meeting was in relation to the other side of this culvert, a vertical wall that the township is evaluating and made the comment that it's still safe for the community. This is on the other side of that culvert. It's wholly related to stream activity and erosion.
Yes, may I ask, so what are your repair projects intentions? How are you planning to correct that retention wall?
Again, I'm gonna separate from the retention wall, and this is specific to erosion damage. But to answer your question on what we would do, it is focused on repairing the stream bank with riprap. And, and that would provide the durability against stream erosion. So we're gonna fill in the scour with gravelly material and the stream bank erosion is then stabilized with riprap.
I don't really know what that is, is that like some type of bio?
Stone, big stone.
Big stone?
Yeah. Yeah.
To build up like a retainer?
Yeah.
Run off?
It's in a basket too, right, usually?
Is it screen, yeah?
The, the gabion baskets hold little stone, but the basket holds it in place. That is one consideration, but we're not sure the aesthetics of that fit this environment, so we would, we would look at something different beyond the gabion basket.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? The question was, is it on the north side?
Yes.
But Mr. DeSerra, we do have problems on both sides of that culvert.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tony, when you say back then, is that the sixties, seventies?
It was installed circa 2000 and 2002, that side had the... Yeah.
All the stories Tony could tell, yeah.
That was, the wall on the north side was repaired and the large stone was added to combat the stream activity, the stream forces. That was a wall issue back then. This is same side but other side of the creek.
Any other questions from residents?
There is actually one person in the audience.
Yes. Yes, Cheryl.
I'm curious how this is handled accounting-wise. In other words, this is something that is a, as I understand it, a repair for the benefit of the golf course, among other things. Is this, is this charged off to the golf course as an improvement to the golf course, a repair to the golf course? Or is this just a general charge?
It's not touching the golf course. I think we're just using the golf course as a reference to what side of the culvert.
It doesn't join the golf course?
It, it is adjacent and the property for that pond is the golf course. I'm, I'm gonna have to defer.
I think a better way to describe it, Mrs. Spalding, this is underneath Geo Carlson, the actual culvert is actually under the road of Geo Carlson and is a part of the township's stormwater facilities. As far as where this is accounting for, this is a part of the stormwater projects which we had increased funding and floated a bond to complete.
Okay.
So though it is adjacent to the golf course, whether the golf course was there or not, it is irrelevant because it's underneath our road, which...
But it's not handling the water coming off the golf course?
Well, it's handling all of the water coming from that whole area, not just specifically the golf course. It, it is built to convey everything from what would be in that basin.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Cheryl. Any other residents, questions? All right, entertain a motion to approve PSA 0821, PTO 1, amendment number two, in the amount of $39,000 for the Geo Carlson Bridge Repair Project.
Then moved.
They moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Present.
That's all right, I saw the mute sign there, I was just waiting. All right, so that's four with one present, motion passes.
That's it, unless there's any other questions?
Uh, no, I think we're good. Carl, thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda, township manager, Miss Denny. Who we got?
Yes, last week I had received an update from Mike Fuller, who is representing us on behalf of Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission about the LED fixtures. He has not been able to gain access to all of the fixtures to complete our project. So he asked if we would sign a license agreement with Signify so that he can attempt to get some more of these LED fixtures. As with everybody, you know, everybody's still having supply chain and issues trying to get materials. So he is hoping that he can get these fixtures within the next couple of weeks and have this installed this summer. So I just need a motion to, for, to, a request for consideration to ratify a license agreement for Signify for the lighting control system to upgrade municipal street lighting to LED fixtures.
Commissioners, any questions on this?
We gotta move forward?
No.
Keep going. Residents, Tony, if you want to come up to the mic.
Tony just had 2:50. I just went over the change in the cost.
No, that, the pricing will stay the same, it's just a different provider.
Good question, thanks, Tony. Any other questions from residents, Miss Denny?
Not at this time.
Entertain a motion to ratify the agreement for Signify for the lighting control system for the LED fixtures.
They'll move. Second.
By Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Present.
Aye, four with one present, motion passes. Next, this is interesting, go ahead, Miss Denny.
Discussion of naming policy for township's street signs. We had a request to consider changing the name of the street in Carver Court to represent one of the longtime residents there. We've gone back and forth about, you know, right ways to go about this, what the best way to move forward is. I had staff work internally on a draft policy for the board to look at. There's nothing that needs to be done tonight, but wanted the board to look this over over the next couple of weeks, if you so choose. I could have it put on the next agenda. But I, I really just wanted the board to get a taste of that. We've kind of tried to take very basic policy implementations from different cities that they've had for this. And, and what we were looking at is instead of renaming the street, which causes confusion with the postal office and having to do a survey of the residents, much like they do in Philadelphia, where they'll, they'll put a smaller placard above the, or below the street, you know, saying, you know, Smith Way. But we wanted some type of a formal process where the Board of Commissioners has a review and an application so that we, we don't have anything nefarious requested without review.
So just one thing I see already, A3 says submitted to city council, so...
Well, that will be...
The, the, I, I have two things. One, I think the criteria is a little light. Because anybody who, basically anybody who has resided or worked in county township in their lifetime is eligible for this. So I think we should add something to that. And then if there really are people of notable reason to put a sign up, are we really gonna charge them a fee for that?
I, I think, again, that's up to the board. That is what other communities have done, and I think they've done that as a way that it doesn't turn, one, that the residents aren't paying for that, supplementing the time that our public works and the cost of it. You know, it, it really, it's, it's up to the board, however you...
Have we ever done one of these before?
Okay.
No, the only one that we were talking about was when Mr. Eggleston passed away. And they wanted, the family came to us and asked us to rename Foundry Street to Eggleston Way. We actually had, under construction, Bailey Station, so we made them change the name, I forget what the original name was, to Eggleston Boulevard. So we were able to do that without... And actually, any development, really, the name should go through the historical commission for names of, of streets. I think we instituted that back when Dave Mushrush was here. That was years ago. Most developers went to the planning, or the historical commission for street names. That's why you have up at King's Grant, all of those are, some of those are former commissioners and notable people.
On the street?
Yeah, like Paul Elms and stuff like that, but those are notable people from county township.
Right, so, I mean, it was kind of like my recommendation to commemorate Ms. Delma Vaughn. So we're not looking at changing the street name because after initially making that recommendation, you know, realizing the hardship that it would impose on residents and, you know, also the township and county, that it would just be like a memorial cap in memory of, so...
So the, the other thing is, at Slippery Rock, we just have gone through this because everybody that passes away while they still work there, they want a building named after them or a room named after them, and it just, we're, we're running out of things to do, you know, and places to put them. They, what they've, they're creating is a wall of memory where they're gonna put a name of somebody on this wall. We could talk about maybe a patio of memory or something like that, where we could do bricks or something. Because the other thing is, you, you could have five notable people on the same street. What, what do you, you don't want five signs high, you know? So I, I don't know, it's maybe something we should think about. So, but that we, at Slippery Rock, that's what we decided to do because it just, it became untenable to try to keep naming things after people.
There was only one Ms. Delma Vaughn.
And Mr. Muller, who had purchased a bench in memory of his sister, you know, we could do a whole program where we look at benches, trees, bricks, all of the above.
And we could maybe have an inventory of what we need. Like if a family comes and says they want to do something for their loved one, you know, well, you know, we really need benches in the park, or we really need picnic tables, or we really need, you know, these, these things.
That's a nice idea. Other things, you know?
Excellent idea.
Yeah, because we, I know, you know, Wildwood, New Jersey does that, Ocean City, New Jersey does that, and there's actually waiting lists to get on for bike racks and benches.
If you all, if you walk the boardwalk down to Wildwood, some of the benches with the backings, they have the dedication to, you know, family members lost. And then I think the other ones that don't have the backing, they're just waiting.
Yes, and that comes with a monetary contribution.
Of course.
Okay.
That same thing at Slippery Rock is, we didn't want to name all the rooms after people for no cost. You know, they're looking at monetizing those rooms with industry and things like that, so...
Nice.
All right, well, plenty to chew on. If residents have something to chime in with, love your ideas. Maybe not at this time, but anytime, feel free to shoot us an email if you have some ideas on this. But it, it's an excellent idea, even with the street names, just honoring somebody that's dedicated their life here in county township that's done.
What many of the new developments have run into is the county won't allow there to be, if somebody's name is already used or similar to being used, you know, if there's an Elms and a Helms, say, they won't allow you to use that now. And that's why Dwell ended up using the, I think it's from Game of Thrones. They did like Lannister, they did, because they had submitted several times. And, and actually, I gave them names of communities in Wiltshire to try to use the communities around home England, and a lot of those were already used up in the county.
Oh, wow.
And so after three or four renditions of them trying, they, they just said, you know, we're going with names from Games of Thrones. Because we know that that's nowhere else in the county. So that's, that's one of the, the problems the developers are kind of running into is that the county, which is understandable for 911, they, they don't want multiple, I, I'm sure every municipality has a Miller Avenue. I'm sure every, you know, and, and they want now new streets to be unique.
All right, bring this up for discussion, next couple of rounds. Any other questions?
We'll just table that for a couple of weeks.
Yep. All right, Miss Denny, you have... Yep. All right, Ms. Denny, you have, uh, some police interceptors?
Yes, so, um, I was, would like to ask for an authorization of payment to Hondrew Ford for two twenty-twenty-three Police Interceptor Ford Explorers in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. These are in and they are being outfitted. Um, we have this in the capital budget. Just need approval from the board to go ahead and make this payment.
And we approved, uh, the purchase last year?
Yeah, we, we've been ordering early because, I mean, I think we ordered in October and it's, so, close to May and we're just getting them now. So if, if you don't get in a couple of months early, if you wait till, till January, you're not getting them till October.
What does it mean when it says the outfit cost is not included?
Yeah, that would be for the, the lettering, the, um, the cage, the lighting packages, the radio packages, things like that.
So where is the cost for that to be?
It, it, we will have additional as, as we use eight, nine, eight-ten, I think it's called, that's next door. When they finish their bill, they'll submit that and I'll have
Okay, so that's not included.
Any other questions on this purchase?
No.
Entertain a motion to, uh, approve, uh, payment to the Hondrew Board for two twenty-twenty-three Police Interceptor Ford Explorers. I'm glad they're Ford, coming from Ford.
We, we were happy to be able to get them. They're, they only released so many and luckily the dealer called us and said, you know, they gave each, each dealer that does government accounts so many that they could sell. And then you went back into a waiting list again. So if we didn't jump on it when we did, we'd have to wait for the next window to open. That window closed in twenty-three hours.
I remember that, yeah. Amazing. All right, and, um, for each price, uh, one was forty-nine thousand, twenty-five dollars and the other was forty-nine thousand, ninety-five. For a total of ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty. Entertain a motion.
That moved.
Moved? Moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Present.
Four with one present. Motion passes. And next, uh, we have ordinance and resolutions. No, we didn't do that one, okay. Uh, consideration to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash ten, approving the posting of a public auction on municipal bid to dispose of a two thousand and seven Ford F-five-fifty with a plow.
Oh, wow.
Is it in pretty good condition considering, or top dollar here?
We'll have the rust coming with it.
Rust coming with it, all right.
Sixteen years of plowing salt.
All right.
So who decides what monetary value that you put on this?
So municipal bid is almost like the eBay of public auctions. So it goes on there. We'll, we'll set a reserve.
Yes.
Um, but in general, people bid on it and we have been really lucky the last couple couple of years. Um, a lot of contractors will buy these that are only gonna run them a couple of times and, you know, people who just always wanted a dump truck. People buy our police cars and I, I shake my head because, one, they're extremely expensive to fix and
Keeps seats for
To talk about, you know, the engine that's in them makes it, you know, they, they run continuously. It, so because it says it has ninety thousand miles, its engine has a lot more hours on it. So we shake our heads, but people, people jump on them.
Okay, cause I see here, as you said, it's the estimated value of the following item exceeds one thousand dollars.
And we're including the rust for free.
Okay. It'll go, it'll go quick.
All right, any other questions on this?
No.
From residents? Oh, yes, Tony, come on up.
It already
Is it going to be replaced?
We, we've already ordered the trucks. We're waiting for them to come in. We have one in the audience.
Okay.
Noel?
Yes, Noel. Go muted. Talking up a storm, unmute.
I think I raised it by accident. Sorry about that.
Okay, it's good to see you though, Noel. All right, no other, uh, questions? Entertain a motion to, uh, approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash ten.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Present.
That's four with one present. Motion passes. Moving right along, Finance Department. We have a check run forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight to forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven with manual check of two eighty-nine. Uh, Commissioners, any questions on the check run? If not, entertain a motion.
That moved.
Moved? Moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Present.
Aye.
Motion's good, four with one present. And request, uh, to approve the March thirtieth Board of Commissioner meeting minutes. Any changes, corrections needed? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Just making sure I don't have any circles here. Yes. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Present.
Motion's good, four with one present. And that was, uh, Ms. Kennedy first and Commissioner Tendaro second.
Yep.
Um, excuse me, moving along to, uh, the board and, uh, Boards and Commissions. First, we have Park and Rec.
Hey, good evening. I don't have much of a voice, so be very brief. But this Saturday we'll have, uh, first pitch, I think it's
Ten, ten AM.
Ten o'clock?
Yeah, a little more.
Okay, so that'll be at ten o'clock.
Yeah.
At the, uh, County Township Ballpark, we'll have first pitch out there, so there's many of the Commissioners and Township Manager, will you be available? They'll be out there and we'll get the ball to the little players. We, we did it last year. It was a great event, big turnout. So we wanna support our little, uh, baseball players. I think they took the championship last year, if I'm correct. So look forward to being out there with them. On April twenty-second, it's Arbor Day and we'll be doing maintenance of our, our tree buffer trees that are planted throughout the township. We had a great success at the Easter egg hunt last Saturday. Lots of kids, bunnies. And I, I saw a lot of, uh, activity with the children enjoying the park. It was a beautiful day. Thank everybody that came out and participated. We're gonna start our summer movie series on May fifth. At eight PM, we'll, we'll be showing the movie Hook. So everybody get ready, Hook. And we have, um, other movies that, you know, will follow and we'll be posting them as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. The Hulk.
And Hook.
Yeah, that'll be exciting, the Hulk. Next, we have, uh, COG.
I'll be very brief again. Like with COG, you know, we're just really trying to work on the scholarship, uh, so that we can get some of our youth that are interested in pursuing careers in government. Uh, very interesting, uh, proposal because we're trying to also work out the logistics of it so that legally, as a entity, that we can actually do this. You know, with, um, the way that we receive funds, can we actually take this money and allocate it for scholarships? So it's really interesting. Uh, and the other program that we're working on is again to work with all the neighboring school districts to begin to put in a curricula that will help to build up, um, students to become interested as firefighters, police officers, you know, rescue fighters. It's a real unique program and it's really underway, very active now in the Oxford School District. And, um, they got some people on the ground that are really moving this project to get children, young people, I should say, interested in government and becoming, um, firefighters, EMS, uh, rescuers. And they're actually gonna be able to get credits while they're in high school, which will be transferred, you know, if they decide to go into a higher education. So they're already, you know, sharing success stories. So I'm sure more information will be coming down the pike for that, but that's definitely a good way to, uh, fill some of these vacancies that we're experiencing throughout many of our municipalities. Thank you.
Eugene? For the municipal authority, there was a pre-construction meeting held on March second for the Phase Five County Interceptor Repair Project. It's the last section that, uh, we're dealing with for the interceptor. Um, back in March, we signed the Reed Street Project Sanitary Sewer Easement Agreement, uh, for three locations, thirteen-twenty-one Reed Street, thirteen-twenty Oak and fourteen-hundred Oak. Uh, also at the March meeting, assigned the Financial Security Agreement for the Starbucks and Chipotle, which is part of the Phase Two project at the Lomax Center. Um, and last, at March meetings, uh, we also approved the chairperson to sign a letter of credit reduction certificate of completion. Uh, this is, uh, for the Chester County Sports Arena Project. And for Dara, at the March meeting, uh, we reviewed a draft concept plan for the Dara Treatment Plan upgrades that will be necessary to provide uh, for the additional one million gallons of treatment capacity currently sought out, uh, by all five municipalities. Uh, it will also, uh, provide for flood protection to the level that we experienced in the aftermath of Hurricane Ida, planning ahead. And with the fire board, I did not have a chance to check my notes. I'm, I'm pretty sure I had a meeting in March, uh, but I don't wanna give some false information because I draw on a blank. All right, uh, next on the agenda, we do have Historical Commission.
Yeah, the Historical Commission, uh, continues its battle to try to preserve our historic structures. We, uh, have a strong and dedicated membership that is committed to all of these things and, uh, discussed, I have committed and we have discussed helping Abby Swan out with her parts and rep commission as much as possible, beginning with her, uh, tree, uh, event coming up, uh, two Saturdays from now. Uh, at the direction of Chair Stevens, uh, I sent the, uh, twenty-twenty-two annual report to all members of this commission over a month ago. Mr. Stevens tells me that he has not received even an acknowledgement of receipt from any of you. So it'd be great if somebody could at least do that. Um, we will meet next Wednesday and, uh, look forward to whatever we can do.
All right, thank you, Mark. Next, Lincoln Highway.
I don't really have a report. We've been working, or we were working in the past several months on the zoning task force items. So, uh, that's what we spent most of our time on in the last couple of months. Uh, we do need to get started with now that we have Larda, um, trying to get this group up and, uh, uh, making it more of a organized group where they might be able to take care of themselves instead of have the township run the group for them. So that's, that's our goal in the next coming months.
Cool. And Golf Committee?
Oh, Lincoln Highway, golf. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, good news. Our next meeting will be held April twenty-fourth at five forty-five PM at the golf course. And terrific news, we have a golf manager coming in. Her name is Nicole Shannon. She will be starting April twentieth to replace Chris. So looking forward to that. Please feel free to stop by if you're able to make the meetings. Be great to see ya. There's a lot going on at the golf course. Thank you.
Thanks, Lorraine. Next on the agenda, additional business. Additional business at this time? I'm thinking no. All right, public comment? On the floor for public comment? None in this room? Zoom world? Okay. Pete has thanked us for the support for the Coachella Library. Okay. And, and Tony? Okay, come on up.
I don't know, um, Tony DiSario. Anyway, I noticed Markman saying, uh, present. Is there a standard order procedure that this board goes by that you do yea or nay or?
Robert's Rules of Order allow a present vote, and a present vote actually reduces the number of votes. So instead of needing three to, if you only had three people, instead of needing two, you would only need one to, to pass something. So voting present is like you didn't vote at all.
Didn't vote at all.
Yes.
Oh, the word
But under Robert's Rules of Order, present isn't acceptable.
When he first started, I couldn't understand what he was saying, but when Noel had said it, I thought he was just passing on, uh, his vote. But I just thought maybe there was a certain order that you
Yeah, we follow Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. All right, any public comments? Hand raised?
Well, I have a question about, um, back to the question about the two new restaurants going into Lomax. When will that trigger, I assume, all right, let me go back. My, my understanding is that the reason that the Lomax was not required to put in that full uh, stormwater management system was because they were waiting for the two front parcels to be done. When will it trigger their requirement to complete a stormwater management system for that old property? What will trigger it?
Good question.
So land development will trigger that, and, uh, when they begin construction, that'll trigger the, the, uh, construction of the stormwater management facilities.
So just to be sure, understand, they will not be allowed to build any, any restaurant without that stormwater system being installed?
They can do them simultaneously, but yes, they, they will have to build the stormwater with, in conjunction with the, the restaurants.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any other public comment? Wow, quicker than last time. All right, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
That moved.
So moved, second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night.